Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with equal liberty and justice for all. Click all the row, please.
Burns.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Let the record show that all members are present and accounted for. Item number two is Minutes. You all should have received a copy of the Minutes. Any corrections or additions to the Minutes? There are none, we'll move to item number three, Presentations. First, Mr., First Vice Mayor Burns will be doing the first two Presentations, Business of the Month. August Business of the Month, Mr. Paul Brim was at the podium.
Actually, I don't know if our representatives from the two businesses are here tonight, so I'll let you know. I don't see them yet, but our August Business of the Month, we're actually quite thrilled about this project because it's another new addition to our business community. Earlier this summer, Union Savings Bank made a significant investment to buy and renovate a building on Kempermetto Drive, converting this vacant building into a first-class office operation. Founded in 1904 to encourage savings and promote home ownership, Union Savings operates 35 full-service branches in greater Cincinnati and several lending offices. The company prides itself on personalized customer service, and indeed, each of their employees is trained to recognize that commitment and provide personalized financial services to each and every client. This gives them a distinct advantage over larger financial institutions whose employees may not have the time to provide such personalized service. Traditional banking services include personal and commercial checking, savings accounts, certificates of deposit, money market accounts, and a full range of mortgage loan products. And indeed, they're one of the largest mortgage lenders in greater Cincinnati. The expert team at Union provides personal, friendly service, and that's why this company is one of the top financial institutions in our market. In recognition of the company's recent investment in our community, it's our honor to honor Union Savings Bank Forest Park with this much deserved award. I don't know if Brittany Stuckey or another representative from the bank was able to join us tonight. I think they're just walking in. Are you here from the bank?
Yeah.
Okay, you're just in time. So with that, I wanted to go ahead and let Vice Mayor present the award to Union Savings Bank for our August Business of the Month.
Thank you, Paul. In the plaque reads City Forest Park, Business of the Month, Union Savings Bank, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't prepare a speech, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody and thank you for the nomination, for, you know, making us Business of the Month, and I'm happy for what Forest Park and Union Savings Banks can do together, and, you know, come see me at the bank.
Our September Business of the Month is somebody that's probably a little more recognizable in terms of they've been a part of our business community for a number of years. The Frishe's in Forest Park on Witten Road recently celebrated a ribbon-cutting ceremony to commemorate the impressive renovation of their Forest Park restaurant. Frishe's made a significant investment on a complete refresh of the Witten Road location, inside and out. Indeed, now it's a great addition to a key gateway into our community. In 1905, Dave Frish opened the family's first restaurant. Later, he opened the famous Mainland Restaurant, and in 1946, joined with business partner Bob Nguyen to launch the double-decker Big Boy Sandwich. And we all know the rest is kind of history from there on out. This popular restaurant chain grew to over 200 locations, and today is an established greater Cincinnati favorite. Throughout the years, Frishe's employees have given their time and resources to numerous causes throughout our region, and indeed, in Forest Park, that spirit of giving demonstrated by the founders continues to this very day. Local employees generously contribute their time and talents to a wide variety of community and school activities, as we well know. We are very fortunate to have Frishe's as a member of our business community, and we were hopeful that Charles Steele was going to be able to join us. I don't know if Mr. Steele or another representative from the restaurant here. If not, I will make sure that he receives this award. I know we had a change in the calendar tonight on the timing of the meeting, so I'll make sure that he receives this. For those of you who haven't been in the restaurant, it really is a marked difference in terms of, especially the interior of the restaurant. I was surprised. We could obviously see the exterior improvements, but the interior is, it's really an impressive renovation, and we're very fortunate to have them here. Thank you.
Now move to item C, a proclamation. Where is Jason? Ah, there he is. Hello, Jason.
Hi, I'm doing well.
Proclamation for Jason. Whereas, Jason Grisgore was born in South Bend, Indiana on November 22, 1974.
You didn't have to tell him that age, but you really did.
And whereas, Jason's grandmother was a driving force in his love for animation, particularly Disney. In 1986, Jason moved to Vandelia, Ohio, where he found his passion for writing, animation, and created and published his first comic strip in a local newspaper that he has never shown us.
I hear that so often nowadays.
Whereas, Jason graduated summa cum laude, 15th in his class of 16.
It was a small college, it really was.
Received the award from St. Joseph's College in 1997 with a Bachelor's of Science in Communications, Mass Media Theater Arts, with a minor in Art and English. Whereas, Jason began as a volunteer coordinator production technician for Waycross Media and was hired by Waycross Community Media in August of 97, and in July of 98, he was promoted to Master Control Operator. Whereas, while still holding on to his dream of creative process, Jason attended Bowling Green State University's digital editing course, becoming a certified digital editor in Media 100, and soon after Final Cut Pro, and after certification, he assisted the former government access coordinator as a personal editor. And whereas, in March of 2006, Jason was promoted once again to Operations Manager, overseeing the daily operations of the organization, staff, and facilities. And in August of 2008, he was promoted to Government Access Coordinator, making it his mission to be the best, and to the best of his ability, to give each of the Waycross communities personalized attention with an eye for detail and elevated awareness. And whereas, Jason has been honored by two members of the United States Congress, the United States Census Board, a number of representatives of the state of Ohio, Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, various Hamilton County Departments, regional and local video competitions, and a few local nonprofit organizations. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Charles Johnson, Mayor of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2018, as Jason Grisgore Day in the City of Forest Park, and do hereby urge all residents to join with me in recognizing and honoring Jason Grisgore for loyalty and dedication to the City of Forest Park and the surrounding communities, to wish him health, happiness, and success in his future endeavors as he travels abroad. Jason, congratulations, and thank you for all you've done for Forest Park.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Well, I would be remiss to say, first of all and foremost, thank you to each and every one of you on this board who have come before you and who have been here now. You are my family, you have foremost been my family. Who would have ever thought graduating from college and taking a summer off, saying, "I'm not going to get a job until I take a break on my vacation from school," and literally get a job right out of college and stay there for 21 years? It's definitely something you don't see every day, and it's because of people like you here that made me come in every day and do the job, and I hope that as I leave and board that plane, that you can look back and say, "Jason, you did exactly what you set out to do." And I want to thank you personally from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks, Jason.
Over my head, yeah.
Comments from council?
I gotta give you a hug.
Counsel, any comments?
I'm gonna miss you so much. We know, we're gonna miss you so much. And it gives me a reason to want to visit switching. You have it.
Anybody on council comments?
Yes. My, my, my. Jason, you've been absolutely wonderful, and it's been just a pleasure to work with you. You've always operated with the utmost of integrity, fair reporting, you've got a lot of creativity that you've brought to Waycross Media, and you have supreme resource management skills with the meager resources and budgets that we have over there, so for that, we thank you as well. You've been able to forge partnerships that otherwise, you know, weren't even in existence, and bring a number of different surrounding communities together for the betterment of our media station. And you've got, of course, Unending Energy. You rival me with that. And so for that, I thank you. I want some chocolate, so make sure you send some, and we will meet you again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Jason, we actually go back to about 1997, when I came into the Waycross, and you taught me how to handle the equipment the first time. You were a delight to our community, an asset as great as either anybody on council. You were a mainstay, and we're truly going to miss you. I'm probably gonna think I see you back there, and I'm gonna hunt you down on social media, and we will remain friends. Please take great pictures or post great videos of where you are. I need the break. Thank you, have a blessed life.
I do intend to log my travels, so everyone is coming along with me, and Diana, as you said, you know, you want to come, you have a reason, my door is always open.
Anyone else? Jason, thank you for all you've done for us. Mr. B, you.
I just wanted to be last because, Jason, I didn't know you were from South Bend, and it just made me even that much better, and much more happy for you, because you may not know, I went to high school in Fort Wayne, went to grade school in Gary, so we were like sandwiched.
We are brothers, essentially, come on.
You know, so, you know, understanding that, now I understand who you are, because I grew up with all of this. And you've made Northern Indiana proud. You've put your stamp on this community with the kinship and the resilience and the energy that only someone from Northern Indiana can do. And that's not to take anything from the great Buckeye State that we live in, but I understand your roots, and I know your character, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
I just want to say congratulations. I remember the first time you interviewed me when I was running for council, like, oh, Lord. I mean, I was shaken, but you made me comfortable, and I thank you for that, and I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss seeing you around here every week. Good luck to you, and good speed. Hello, Jason.
Jason, thank you for all you've done for Forest Park. We appreciate you, we will miss you. You are one of the only two people that I've ever allowed to interview me on TV, because I don't trust the media, I specifically do not trust news folk, but you're the exception. Thank you, Godspeed.
Thank you, sir, and thank all of you.
Next, item on the agenda, oath of office, police officer, Michael Robb.
Well, as we say goodbye to Jason, we say hello to Michael Robb. I'll just give a quick bio of Mr. Robb. This is a process that actually began probably before the start of the new year, when we gave a lateral entry test and proceeded up to where we are now in hiring Mr. Robb. And this is exciting for us, because this gets us one step closer to having a full roster of officers. Mr. Robb will be our 37th police officer of 38, so we're still working on our 38th. But Mr. Robb is 36 years old, and he's a resident of Butler County. He started his law enforcement career in 2002 with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department as a corrections officer. In 2013, he was promoted to Road Patrol with the Sheriff's Department, and he worked in various areas throughout the county. In 2016, he became a field training officer and was assigned to the Lincoln Heights Post. He is a recipient of six divisional letters of commendation with the Sheriff's Office and comes highly recommended by the Sheriff's Department. He's married with three children, and I'll let him introduce them here shortly, and his badge is going to be pinned on by his wife, Casey. So I'll let the mayor get on with this.
Okay. Mike, do you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I instate your name.
I, Michael Robb.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the City of Forest Park.
Of the City of Forest Park.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duties.
As a Forest Park police officer.
As a Forest Park police officer.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Want to thank Chief Burns and his command staff, the mayor, city manager, and anyone else that had a hand in my hiring process for the opportunity to serve the City of Forest Park. Very blessed. Also want to give thanks to my family, my awesome wife, Casey, for dealing with this Also want to, so bad at public speaking, I'm so sorry, guys. I'm looking forward to the second part of my law enforcement career. I'll go ahead and introduce my family, it's Casey, pin my badge. Youngest, I have Kane, he's six, Kalen, she's 10, Bryce, he is eight.
Nine.
Nine, yeah. Nine? I don't have a nine-year-old. That's not me, that's him. He's eight. Thank you, everybody, much appreciated. Looking forward to serving.
Okay, we will, any comments from council? Councilwoman Herbie.
Mike, as you can see, we're a family here, so welcome to the family, and congratulations on your hiring. And we also always want to send out thank you to the family, because we know that you were letting them do a dangerous job, and we thank you for your support for them and for what they do for our community, so thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Welcome to Forest Park. And now I know Kane's name.
Okay, thank you all. Mike, Mike and I have done something that rarely gets done in Forest Park, and that is, this is the second time, Mike, that I've had the honor of swearing Mike in. We often run into that situation where we have to do it legally before a council meeting so that he can start and be a legal officer. I think we did that last Monday, so this is a repeat. The one thing that we did at that first ceremony that may have gone unnoticed here, and it's something that probably we should have been doing a long, long time ago, while this oath is short, it's not easy to say, and the reason it's not easy to say, because there are words in there that you should use simpler words to make it simple. So we made a command decision to change the word, to take out the word municipality and say city. It makes the oath that much easier, because, you know, and the chief and his secretary says, "We should have done that a long time ago." So that was different, and again, Mike, congratulations. Want you all to, I want you and your family to know that you're now part of the best police department in the world, and we continue to be that as people like you come in, you get to work with all those guys on the back row back there who's been here for a while, and they have made this police department what it is, and you will, the next time we swear somebody in, hopefully you'll be sitting back there to guide them as well. Thank you all. We will now move to item number, item E, which is awards. Councilwoman Holt.
These are the beautification awards for 2018 for the industrial parts of Forest Park. There were 11 winners, but I will only call the names of the ones that are present. I'll give them a chance to leave.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. And Chelsea. Again, I guess y'all didn't want to preach it, get to the mic, but that's okay, that's good, that's good. But again, thank you to everyone, on behalf of Dr. Victor's cousin, senior pastor of Inspiration Baptist Church, we accept this award on behalf, and thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're right. Quintappel, AME Church. And Mills Run Apartment. And we will see that the other winners, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Kensington Park.
Kensington.
No.
Apartment.
There, it's on the bottom.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't do it on purpose, it's because they highlighted the ones that were gonna be here tonight, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Please, whatever you're asking for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you, have a great evening.
Did I miss anybody? Thank you all for keeping Forest Park beautiful.
Kensington and Geo, just say, repeat the name before the camera.
Geotechnology Inc. and Kensington Apartment.
Okay, we now move to item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council? No one? Thank you. Next, item number five, reports of standing committees. First committee is community development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening, but I will answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, for the work session on the 24th, I have no items for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next committee is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time, however, I am available for questions.
Questions for Councilwoman Collins? There are none, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next, next committee is Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? There are none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thanks.
Next committee is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? There are none, Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee is Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you, I've passed out a report from the OML, Ohio Municipal League Conference, for August 17th that occurred in Finley, Ohio. The report that you have in front of you kind of outlines the, of course, the workshops and the different things that we went over. Just to kind of give you a real scant overview, there was a legislative update brought to us by the executive director of OML, which had some really, really, you know, I think interesting things in terms of bills that'll probably end up impacting our municipality here in the near future. We also talked about home rule, medical marijuana, public nuisances, economic development, and social media, which was really fitting and timely for some of the things that are going on. Some further information can be found on their website, you can feel free to kind of peruse through this. There were some things that I think I was certainly able to take from that conference and perhaps reflect on that, and then perhaps consider a number of those things as we begin making certain decisions in Forest Park, especially with the ones out of the city management, there may be some additional things in economic development that we may want to consider as we continue to progress forward. I also had a meeting concerning our strategic plan, that's also in there on your third page, and met with some department heads, including Mr. Paul Brim, out there to kind of look at what those, what those plans, how fitting are those plans to exactly what we are working on now? You've got the schools that have, you know, that are changing and how we're going to kind of incorporate that and continue our journey. So that's part of it, and then lastly, I will just say, attended the Waycross Media Program Meeting where we learned that Jason will be leaving, and some other things. we learned that Jason will be leaving and some other things. They've got the new equipment that really brings us into the 21st century and now allows them to be, to go off, acquire new accounts because they're now having to take less equipment with them, and the picture is clear. And so that's really going to help our station to acquire more business, which is a great thing. And then also attended the State of the Schools address a couple of weeks ago at Wynton Woods City Schools. So some really great things, I think, happening over there that I know we're all, you know, very much in support of and proud of. That's my report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you. There are no items listed on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next, standing committee is ways and means, Councilwoman Herbie.
No report. We've got two issues on here from economic development, which you learned about in work session last week.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 24th. Do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Next item is the inner government relation to communications committee. I have no items or, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Next item on the agenda, item number six is the mayor's report. I would like to report only that today, Councilwoman Holt, in the human resources committee, we conducted interviews of applicants for the city manager, the vacant city manager's position. That process will continue next, on Wednesday, the 26th. Notices will be sent out announcing a special council meeting with an executive session. It is yet to be determined whether, that, whether the work session of the 24th will also be moved and rescheduled to the 26th, depending on items. There obviously would be some items below the line. So at this point, I would say to council and to the public that on the 26th, there will be a special council meeting, time to be announced, and that will, to continue the process for selecting, in the process of recruiting a city manager. So make sure you mark your calendars for that, and the notice will go out to postpone and/or cancel the work session that would have been held on the 24th. Questions? Hearing none, that will end my report. I will answer any questions if there are any. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll be relatively brief and report that everything is operating smoothly and as we would expect from each department. And departmental reports have been completed and included in the council packet. They're also placed on file with the clerk of council for public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Questions for the city manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item, item number eight, other reports, first of those being law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since last council meeting, I've had the opportunity to review and approve a proposed contract from American Fidelity. I worked with Captain Ward regarding two very difficult requests for public documents on very old criminal cases that have been closed. I gave an opinion to Chief Jones about alternative bidding process and the use of the Houston-Galveston area council to make purchases, which has been approved in the state of Ohio. I reviewed an issue regarding a use easement, or I'm sorry, a maintenance easement of driveway at Northland Tower. And that is the end of my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for law director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item would be a report from clerk of council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 21, numbers 21-2018 and 22-2018 were posted as required, as well as resolution numbers 20-2018 and 21-2018. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, before we move to item number nine, I have a question of the clerk and/or the law director. We have on the, on tonight's agenda an item I, which was to be a motion to convene into executive session. We're not going to be doing that. Do we need to amend the agenda or do we need just not to make that motion at that time?
I believe you just do not make the motion.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, unfinished business. Is there a motion? Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the, for the second time by title only, ordinance number 23-2018. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, ordinance number 23-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0. Next item is item A, ordinance number 23-2018. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 23-2018, and ordinance amending chapter 34, employee fringe benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of ordinance number 23-2018. Second.
Moved in second that we adopt ordinance 23-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Just very briefly, we're, we're proposing to update our ordinances in three areas in this particular chapter. One concerning life insurance, one concerning health co-pays, and one concerning part-time medical coverage for retirees who are rehired. The, the latter one is to facilitate that because many of these people that are rehired may lose their stipend from the state under their retirement system. And this is to help offset that, that so that it will be more attractive for them to be rehired. The other two are basically corrections we need to reflect what we're currently doing contractually. And I would urge adoption of the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 23-2018?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item 10, new business. Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number 25-2018. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance 25-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Herbie?
Ah, yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 25-2018. Clerk will read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 25-2018, amending annual 2018 appropriation ordinance 20-2018.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 25-2018. Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance 25-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yeah, this is a third quarter housekeeping cleanup where we basically make corrections just to track actual expenses versus projections, which may be not in line with each other. Essentially, we move money within the same fund areas. So I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one clarification. For anyone who may have gotten, received this packet or downloaded the packet, this is noted as ordinance 24-2018 in the memo, just to be clear, although it is ordinance 25. So there was a typo in the memo.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 25-2018?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolutions number 22-2018 through 24-2018. These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolutions number 22-2018 through 24-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution number 22-2018. Clerk, please read resolution 22-2018 by title only.
Resolution number 22-2018, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Corbin Technologies for the purchase of 16 marked police vehicle video systems.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, I moved, I moved, I moved to adopt in resolution number 22-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 22-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Just a brief one. This is a scheduled purchase of the in-car video systems for our 16 marked police vehicles. Because this is a specialized purchase, we are recommending waiving any bidding requirements and purchasing based on the formal competitive quotes that came in. The Information Technology Administrator Public Works and Police Department really came together and considered a lot of different factors and the needs of our, of our department, and concluded that Corbin Technologies coming in at $119,332.76 was the one that fit our needs best and our price point. And so I urge adoption of, of this, of the city manager going into agreement with Corbin Technologies.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 22-2018?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Resolution 22-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item C, resolution number 23-2018. Clerk, please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number 23-2018, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with, with Finley Fire Equipment Company for the purchase of one Pierce fire engine through the state of Ohio bidding process.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, I moved to adopt resolution number 23-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 23-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Um, yes, this is also another scheduled purchase, this time for our fire department. This engine will replace the 2004 Ferrera fire engine. And of course, these are specialized again, and so it does take some time in order for this to actually be built. The cost of this is $627,604. We'd see this engine in 2019. The actual purchase is pretty straightforward. It's purchased through a state bidding process, which means that there are no further bidding requirements necessary by the local government since the state has already completed all the bidding requirements on our behalf. So I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 23-2018?
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 23-2018 passes 7-0. Next item, item D, resolution 24-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 24-2018, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Vogopole Fire Equipment Inc. for the purchase of mine safety appliances, MSA self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA rapid intervention team kits, and spare air cylinders.
Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. I move to adopt resolution number 24-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 24-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this resolution is for the scheduled purchase of SCBA, those are self-contained breathing apparatus, or apparati, equipment for the fire department. With this approval and resolution, we would purchase the replacement equipment from Houston-Galveston Area Council of $200,000. This is not off of our state bid list, but the HGAC is a government, governmental union in Texas that basically serves the same purchase, purpose of providing a more efficient purchasing program for local governments by conducting on their behalf a competitive, comprehensive cost-saving, cost-saving bidding process, which we were able to take advantage of in terms of cost savings. So I would urge council to adopt this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 24-2018?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
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 Resolution 24-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item E, resolution 25-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number 28-2018, a resolution consenting to the implementation of a tenant assistant program for stores affected by the North Point redevelopment project. Whereas North Point Shopping Center has been acquired by a local that will make a multimillion-dollar investment to convert the underutilized property into an extension of a successful business, and whereas several existing stores must relocate following the termination of their leases by the previous property owner prior to the sale of this property, and whereas the city had previously identified the retention of existing stores as a goal of its redevelopment program, and whereas while the city is under no obligation to do so, staff recommends the establishment of an assistance fund to help stores affected by the North Point project. And whereas the Economic Development Commission has reviewed this project and expressed its support for the proposed initiative, now therefore being resolved by the city of the Forest, by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the council of the city of Forest Park hereby gives its consent for the city manager to create the North Point Tenant Assistant Program, Assistance Program to help stores affected by the North Point redevelopment project. Specifically, the city of Forest Park will provide each store owner with a $1,000 grant to assist with their relocation, provided the store signs a lease and moves to another property in the city of Forest Park. Section two, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I have a question first. In the very first whereas, should we add after local, local business?
Yes.
I, okay, I would, I would move to adopt resolution number 25-2018 with that typographical correction. Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 25-2018. Is there a discussion?
No, I think it speaks for itself.
Hearing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on 25-2018?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 25-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item F, resolution number 26-2018. The clerk, please read this resolution in full.
Resolution number 26-2018, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Pay Options LLC and the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Whereas the city of Forest Park has identified the recruitment of companies from the financial service industry, a prior, a priority for its redevelopment campaign. And whereas Pay Options LLC will make a significant investment to lease space at the Kemper Metal Business Center. And whereas the company will bring 14 existing full-time employees to this location and create another six full-time jobs as a result of this project, total annual payroll of approximately $1 million. And whereas an incentive, incentive is required to make our city cost competitive, with others under consideration. And whereas the Economic Development Commission has reviewed this project and expressed its support for the proposed incentive, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the council of the city of Forest Park hereby gives its consent for the city manager to enter into an incentive agreement with Pay Options LLC to facilitate a project in this Kemper Metal Business, this Business Center. Pay Options will sign a lease for a minimum of five years, bringing 20 jobs to the city of Forest Park. In return, the city of Forest Park will provide, provide Pay Options LLC with a $7,500 redevelopment grant to be paid in the first quarter of 2019. Section two, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the early, earliest date allowed by law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of resolution number 26-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 26-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Again, I, I think the motion was self-explanatory.
Any other discussion from anyone else? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on 26-2018?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution 26-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item G, a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Barry Owen from the Planning Commission for the term expiring 11/30/2020.
Second.
It's moved in second that we accept the resignation of Mr. Barry Owens from the Planning Committee, whose term would have expired at 11/30/20. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item H, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Second.
It's moved in second that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any further business to come before the body? Is there any further business to come before the body? Mr. Burns?
I just, um, I think it would be somewhat remiss without recognizing the service of Barry Owen. As many of us know, Barry served on council. And after leaving council, he became an active member or permanent member of the Planning Commission. And due to, you know, health concerns and things of that nature, he has decided to resign from his current post. I think he was the president or chair of the Planning Commissions. And as some may or may not know, Barry also is a former Air Force. So he's been in public service all of his life. And, you know, he's done a great job in the city, participating in many, many levels. And just giving him some level of recognition for his service, I think, would be appropriate. And with that, I don't know if, if the clerk can send him a card on our behalf or something. Great. Thank you for, for that opportunity to share.
Anything else from anybody else? Anything else at all? Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.